Good evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Warren and West Morris Counties, I am pleased to welcome you to our virtual candidates debate for Mount Olive Town Council. My name is Fadiya Hindy, and I am a member of the Voter Services Committee of the League of Women Voters of Warren and West Morris Counties. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. Elections and voting are core concerns for the League. The League is committed to providing fact-based information about issues and positions candidates take on those issues to help voters make their own decisions and participate in the electoral process. The League envisions a democracy where everyone has the right, the knowledge, the confidence, and the opportunity to participate. The League of Women Voters never supports or opposes candidates for office or political parties. Any use of the League name or footage from this debate in campaign materials or advertising of any kind, including internet, social media, cable, or television, is not authorized by the League of Women Voters. Membership in the League is open to people 16 years and older of all gender identities. With 100 years of experience, the League is one of America's oldest and most trusted civic nonprofit organizations. We encourage everyone to go to vote411.org, a one-stop site for information on all aspects of voting in New Jersey with information about all candidates up and down the ballot. You can find the Warren and West Morris Counties League on Facebook and the New Jersey State League's website at l w v n j dot org. All forums and debates conducted by New Jersey Leagues can be viewed on the New Jersey website, l w v n j dot org, and vote411.org. This forum is being live streamed on the Warren and West Morris Counties League YouTube channel, and it will be available there for viewing afterward. Future confirmed forums and debates include Chester Board of Education on October 11th and Morris County Commissioners on October 26th. At this time, I would like to introduce our moderator, Louise Murray. Louise is a League-trained moderator who is not from this voting district. Louise will now introduce the candidates and outline the format for this evening.
Thank you very much. I'm very happy to be joining all of you, and I wish we could be in person, but certainly understand we're going to a virtual format. I wanted to begin and underscore what Fadiya Hindy just mentioned about, "I am from out of Mount Olive. I live in Morristown, have for 43 years." And that can be an advantage certainly because invariably I'm going to make a mistake in our time together, and any mistake I make, I hope is not perceived as favoring or disfavoring any of the candidates here. The downside is that I may mispronounce a name or the name of some aspect of your community, and I ask for your indulgence. Our format tonight will be that each candidate will introduce himself or herself in a two-minute opening statement. After, and two of the candidates, I'm going to introduce the candidates in a minute, were not able to be here, and they have graciously prepared written statements that I will read. After the opening statements, we will get into what I think is the guts of the candidates' forms, and that is that I will ask questions that have been sent to the League of Women Voters of Warren and West Morris Counties in advance. And each candidate will have, who is present on this virtual meeting, will have the opportunity for a one-minute response. If any of the six candidates who are present would like to offer a rejoinder to what's been said, she or he will raise a hand, and that will be, we agreed earlier physically, and they will have 30 minutes to respond, as will any other of the remaining candidates who so chooses. Having some experience doing this, I anticipate that our meeting will last a little over 60 minutes, and no matter how engaged we are, we will certainly conclude within 90 minutes. Our attention span will have had it by then, so most likely we will have a little shorter time. Finally, in closing, we will again have each candidate have the opportunity to make a two-minute closing statement. When we meet in person, I usually bring a bowl and have numbers, and people pick their sequence. We're not able to do that tonight. I didn't want to say, "Oh, I'll do it," because God knows how that might come across to some members of the community. So we are going to use alphabetical order, and I'll use alphabetical order now to introduce the candidates. And of course, I don't know where they are on your screen, but when I mentioned, all the candidates have their names here, and maybe they'll give a wave. Our first candidate is Jordan Bernstein, who is a Democratic candidate. Our next candidate in alphabetical order is Joe Ferrante, and he represents the Republican Party. Our next candidate is Antoine Gales, who represents the Democratic Party. And then we have Barandai Sharma, who represents the Democratic Party. And then Nicole Spaldo, who represents the Democratic Party. And here tonight, Gregory Stewart is the sixth candidate, and he represents the Republican Party. After each of these who are present on the Zoom makes his or her two-minute opening statement, I will read prepared statements from two candidates, who are both Republican, who were unable to join us tonight. And those individuals are Daniel Amianda and John Mania. And they have sent the League of Women Voters of Warren and West Morris Counties statements that I will read, and I prepared them ahead of time, and they stayed within the two minutes. So I would ask Kelly Shay, I think she's setting up now, to begin the timed two-minute openings. And by, the public office is certainly a responsible position, but because these are your fellow members in the community, the candidates prefer that we use first names tonight. So Jordan, we'll start with you.
All right, well, first, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this debate tonight, and I'd like to thank my Republican counterparts for agreeing to do this. My name is Jordan Bernstein, and I've been a resident of Mount Olive for over five years. I live in Flanders with my wife and three daughters, and this town is truly a wonderful place to raise a family. I'll be honest, I never saw myself being here. I had always considered myself a Democrat, and I would vocally support things that I was passionate about, but it wasn't until 2016 that I really started to pay attention to politics. NPR became a station I listened to every morning and afternoon driving to and from work. I spent entirely too much time on the internet and on Twitter, consuming way too much news. I was frustrated at the way things were going, and I was struggling, trying to figure out what I could do. When the opportunity arose to run for town council to try to make a difference in my own backyard, it was something I couldn't pass up. Now, being a member of town council comes with a number of responsibilities, but none more important than representing you, my neighbors. Being your voice means that it is vitally important that members of town council are visible and active, both on regular town council meetings as well as various subcommittees. Whether it be discussing speeding on Clover Hill, accidents on Route 46, or funding for the library, I would consider it a privilege and an honor to be entrusted to be your voice day in and day out. I hope tonight I'll be able to show you why I'm the right person to be your advocate on the Mount Olive Town Council. Thank you.
Thank you, and now our next speaker will be Joe Ferrante.
Oh, and thank you to the League of Women for hosting this event for the town council candidates. My name is John Ferrante, and I have served as a councilman for nearly 10 years. I've been a resident of Bud Lake for approximately 20, where I live with my wife Lynn and three children. I graduated from Seton Hall University with a degree in business management. I am currently employed as a Senior Client Service and Operations Officer within MetLife Management in Whippany. And prior to that, I spent about 20 years at JP Morgan in New York City within their Asset Management Division. I currently sit on the board for the Mount Olive Soccer Club, where I have coached for over 10 years. I have volunteered for several years as baseball coach as well. I am also a third-degree member of the Knights of Columbus at the St. Jude's Parish in Bud Lake. I am a member of the Bud Lake Association, the Morris County Republican Committee, and the Mount Olive Republican Club. I have most recently been named the recipient of the Citizens Award by the Muskanakong Mason's Lodge 42 as Volunteer Soccer Coach of the Year for being recognized as going above and beyond to help our community stay a safe and welcoming place. Before becoming a councilman, I was a member of the Pride Committee and the Mount Olive Planning Board. While serving Mount Olive, I am proud of the work that Mayor Greenbaum, the administration, township employees, and my fellow council members have done to sustain a 0% increase in municipal taxes. For nine years straight, we have often battled an uncertain economy, growing municipality, increasing costs, and a pandemic. I am also very proud of the sense of community in Mount Olive, where we often see the residents come together, whether it be donating to the Mount Olive Food Pantry or just doing something nice for a neighbor in times of need. I love the fact that Mount Olive has something for everyone, from water sports in the lake, premier parks and recreation facilities and activities, and a vast trail system. While I know this is just a small snapshot of what Mount Olive has to offer, I will continue to work to make Mount Olive a safe and desirable community for all the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, and now we'll hear from Antoine Gales.
Thank you very much, and hello, Mount Olive, and my incumbent council members who are here tonight, and the moderators from the League of Women Voters. Thank you for this opportunity to introduce myself. I'm Dr. Antoine Gales, Democratic candidate for Mount Olive Town Council. My family and I have lived here in Mount Olive for 23 years. As a member of the community, I currently serve on the Mount Olive Board of Education, have volunteered for the Township Recreation Department, and the Flanders United Methodist Church Thrift Shop. I support our local food pantry and take part in town cleanups of our roads, our parks, and hiking trails. Over the years, I've come to find that Mount Olive is truly a great place to raise a family, meet new people, and make lasting friendships. I believe, however, that Mount Olive should be a go-to destination for shopping, dining, and exploration. And while I've seen growth in our town, there's still room for improvement. For example, despite a 2011 commitment to improve business development in our strip malls, I see an increase in vacant storefronts, an increase in new housing developments, and a decrease in town services. And our current council's complacency has left a void in accountability to the residents of Mount Olive. I'm running for town council to engage local leaders, civic organizations, and residents throughout the community in a conversation about what comes next for Mount Olive, to ensure that local government is accessible and works in partnership with all residents, regardless if you're a homeowner or renter, you live in the center of town or on the edges, and to engage in the work that has been predetermined too hard to accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you, and now we'll hear from Barandai Sharma.
Hello, everyone, and good evening. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum and to the candidates for participating. My name is Barandai Sharma. My family and I lived in Mount Olive for more than half a decade. My background is accounting and finance. I have a bachelor's degree in accounting and a master's in business administration. What I bring to town council is my 30 years of professional experience in all aspects of accounting, especially budgeting. I am forward-thinking, people-oriented, and result-driven. Over the seven years my family and I lived in Mount Olive, we have grown to love this community, which led to my volunteering activities in town events and serving on the Mount Olive 150 Planning Committee. In addition, I support our local food pantry and cleanup events of our roads and parks. Mount Olive is a great place to live and raise a family. However, over the years, we have seen empty storefronts, little economic growth, large debt, lack of community engagement, and absence of cultural programs that celebrate our diverse backgrounds. I am running because I am concerned about the future of our town, and I would like to engage our residents, business owners, religious leaders, members of various committees, and our current town administrator to come up with innovative ways to develop a strategy for Mount Olive. I look forward to discussing some of those strategies with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, and now we'll hear from Nicole Spaldo.
Thank you very much, and hello, Mount Olive, and my incumbent council members who are here tonight, and the moderators from the League of Women Voters. Thank you for this opportunity to introduce myself. I'm Dr. Antoine Gales, Democratic candidate for Mount Olive Town Council. My family and I have lived here in Mount Olive for 23 years. As a member of the community, I currently serve on the Mount Olive Board of Education, have volunteered for the Township Recreation Department, and the Flanders United Methodist Church Thrift Shop. I support our local food pantry and take part in town cleanups of our roads, our parks, and hiking trails. Over the years, I've come to find that Mount Olive is truly a great place to raise a family, meet new people, and make lasting friendships. I believe, however, that Mount Olive should be a go-to destination for shopping, dining, and exploration. And while I've seen growth in our town, there's still room for improvement. For example, despite a 2011 commitment to improve business development in our strip malls, I see an increase in vacant storefronts, an increase in new housing developments, and a decrease in town services. And our current council's complacency has left a void in accountability to the residents of Mount Olive. I'm running for town council to engage local leaders, civic organizations, and residents throughout the community in a conversation about what comes next for Mount Olive, to ensure that local government is accessible and works in partnership with all residents, regardless if you're a homeowner or renter, you live in the center of town or on the edges, and to engage in the work that has been predetermined too hard to accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you, and now we'll hear from Nicole Spaldo.
Hello, everyone, and good evening. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum and to the candidates for participating. My name is Barandai Sharma. My family and I lived in Mount Olive for more than half a decade. My background is accounting and finance. I have a bachelor's degree in accounting and a master's in business administration. What I bring to town council is my 30 years of professional experience in all aspects of accounting, especially budgeting. I am forward-thinking, people-oriented, and result-driven. Over the seven years my family and I lived in Mount Olive, we have grown to love this community, which led to my volunteering activities in town events and serving on the Mount Olive 150 Planning Committee. In addition, I support our local food pantry and cleanup events of our roads and parks. Mount Olive is a great place to live and raise a family. However, over the years, we have seen empty storefronts, little economic growth, large debt, lack of community engagement, and absence of cultural programs that celebrate our diverse backgrounds. I am running because I am concerned about the future of our town, and I would like to engage our residents, business owners, religious leaders, members of various committees, and our current town administrator to come up with innovative ways to develop a strategy for Mount Olive. I look forward to discussing some of those strategies with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, and now we'll hear from Nicole Spaldo.
Thank you very much, League of Women Voters, for this opportunity. I want to thank Mr. Ferrante and Mr. Stewart for attending this debate with us. My name is Nicole Spaldo. I am an occupational therapist in a local school district, a mom of two, a Girl Scout leader, and a lifelong volunteer. I have been actively involved as a community advocate, partnering at various times with the town council on numerous projects and issues since 2017. My true passion is community engagement and ensuring accessibility, protecting the environment, and fostering equity in our town. Over the last year, we have gone through the worst and longest crisis this town has seen since I moved here nine years ago. Neighbors were sick, hungry, jobless, and in some cases hopeless for an extended period of time. But there are parts of our community which have come together despite our differences and setbacks. Neighbors have networked to make sure everyone is fed and clothed, to make sure everyone has the support needed to make it through the pandemic and economic disruption. But we all know that we still have a lot of work to do. The question is, how do we build back to be the best Mount Olive Week can be? I think we have to invest time and energy into volunteering and community education. I think it's important for us to develop methods of access so all residents can get the services they need, no matter their childcare situation, car situation, physical or cognitive abilities, or socioeconomic status. I think our town council has to focus on promoting physical, mental, and financial well-being for all residents and take responsibility for fostering equity, building community, and celebrating each individual and what they bring to our town. As your next councilwoman, I will work tirelessly to ensure that everyone who wishes to participate in the town can and is encouraged to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, and now we'll hear from Gregory Stewart.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you for having us, and a special thanks to the League of Women Voters for hosting this opportunity to participate with all of us tonight. My name is Greg Stewart. I'm currently completing my second term, which has been nearly six years, as a township councilman. I'm proud of the work that all of us in the community have done and continue to do for the residents of our township. From a personal perspective, I've been a resident in this community for 35 years. I actually grew up in Caldwell, New Jersey, in Esses County, and moved out here after my education. I actually started after high school with New Jersey Bell, went to work with, moved over to AT&amp;T during the breakup, and continued to work there for 32 years, and ended up leaving after that time period as a global operations manager, starting my own business consulting advisory firm with a partner, and I've been doing that for the last 15 years. One of the things that you'll find is I'm very active in the business community. I have the honor of chairing our annual Business Community Food Drive, which we've done for the past 10 years in conjunction with the Mount Olive Chamber and Quines Club, where we consistently collect well over 2,000 pounds of food and money donations, as well as for our fifth-year annual Holiday Lights Festival, which is a complimentary community at the Hackenshire Medical Center. In addition to that, I'm very active in the business community, obviously as a Chair of Business Executive Council, which intersects both the Mount Olive EDC and Mount Olive Area Chamber. I'm the past four-year president and member of the Mount Olive Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm a member of the Morris County Community College, Community, the Morris County EDC, the Government Affairs, and Leadership Morris. I'm a board member of a number of things, and one of the best things is that I married my wonderful wife Sheila. For over 36 years, we live in the Flanders section on Raymar Street, and I have a daughter Rachel, who graduated in 2022, who is now in her second year of NYU Law, so I'm very proud of her. And one of the last things to share with everybody is I'm honored that I will be featured in November, being introduced in the Esses Catholic High School Alumni Hall of Fame. Very proud of that. I have a strong passion and commitment to our community, very active in the business community, and it's a pleasure to work with all the members of Mount Olive.
Well, thank you very much, and I want to commend all of you for your discipline in adhering to our two-minute guideline. I'm now going to read two statements from candidates who are both Republicans who were unable to join us tonight. The first is from Daniel Amianda, and he starts, "Thank you, Mount Olive Township. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to thank you all for making the happiest times working in Mount Olive. I was born in Kenya in 1939. I was the first African-American to serve on Mount Olive Township Council, and I am proof of Mount Olive Township's inclusiveness. I became a member of the Mount Olive Township Council in November 2013, showing diversity among the residents of Mount Olive. The Mount Olive Town Council is all Republican, but each council member has her or his varying ideas. I was educated in the United States of America and worked in New York City Human Resources administrations for 25 years. I was a member of the Mount Olive's Board of Education for 16 years before I was elected to Mount Olive Town Council eight years ago. I really enjoy and still enjoy working with my fellow coworkers for the people of Mount Olive Township. I stand for good schools for children, senior citizen services near home, stable taxes, transportation, creation of jobs, communication, So, in order to help Mount Olive move forward from that, I'd like to see the town council do more in terms of educating the public. A lot of people still believe that the pandemic is over. The numbers are still rising here in New Jersey, and I'd like to see us be able to get a handle on that and be able to start building back the town, as we also try to build back the country as well. Try to make sure that we are able to fill those storefronts, which unfortunately some have been closed due to the pandemic and other issues around town. So, really, I still think the biggest issue for Mount Olive, as well as for the entirety of the country, is to get beyond the pandemic and get beyond COVID.
Thank you. John?
Sure, I would say, you know, something that hits home to everybody still is, you know, your taxes. You know, during these uncertain times, the pandemic, you know, and an economy that, you know, we're not quite sure of the direction that's going in yet. You know, we continue to want to stabilize the taxes. So I would say, you know, continue working with our finance department and the administration to continue with smart spending and looking at any additional ways to bring in revenue so that we can continue to stabilize the taxes and make it ten years in a row of no municipal taxing increase.
Thank you. Anton? Okay, you need to unmute yourself, Anton.
Oh, I didn't have, I didn't have a rebuttal.
Okay, no, no, you have your, you have your one minute to answer the question. What do you consider the most important challenge or challenges facing Mount Olive?
Oh, okay. Oh, thank you very much. I think that, you know, as Jordan said, COVID is one of the biggest challenges, especially considering the divisiveness and all of the repercussions from COVID, which lead into my concern about regenerating small business development here in Mount Olive. As I travel around town, I see so many empty storefronts. And as I admitted in my opening, there was a two thousand and eleven commitment to reduce the number of empty storefronts. And so if we wanted to continue to stabilize our taxes, it's going to be important for us as a community to focus on revitalizing our small business community, because research tells us that the re-energizing of small businesses in a local community helps to set the tone for the culture of the community, as well as generate additional revenue. So by doing those things, by focusing on small businesses in our town, we can both improve the climate and the culture, as well as address the tax issues that Mr. Ferrante just so eloquently spoke about.
Okay. Sharma?
Hi, yes. So walking, during the past four months, I've been walking all over Mount Olive, talking to residents. And of course, taxes are a number-one issue, but they're also, since my two candidates already spoken on taxes, I'm going to touch briefly on another issue, so just community involvement. Talking to residents, I've come to learn that a lot of people are not aware of what's happening in the town. And I believe one of the reasons for that is a lack of information coming out of town hall and the visibility of our town council members within our community. Currently, decisions are being made without sufficient public input, discussion, or feedback. So when developing a long-term master plan for our town, residents should be involved. If elected, I will be visible in community by having regular town hall in various parts of our township or having a Come Meet Your Council Representative Day. I believe it's important that residents have a voice in the decision-making that affects your life. I strongly believe in community involvement and volunteer, because as representatives, we do our best work outside of town halls, working with residents and building community. Thank you.
Nicole?
Thank you. I believe that right now the biggest challenge facing Mount Olive is how the residents are able to or unable to access their resources, as well as the equity in Mount Olive at this time. I think that COVID really revealed that many of our constituents here in Mount Olive are severely isolated. And during their times of need, they did have difficulty accessing the resources that they needed. Just in the last month, I've used my front porch as a means to collect food for two families who didn't have food to get through the weekend. And this is just a revelation, you know, that we are coming to, that we need to be more supportive of the people in our community, regardless of their ability to get to places that we've provided for them. So I think that accessibility to resources and fostering equity, regardless of socioeconomic status, will be a good challenge for us to address as a town council. Thank you.
And Gregory?
I'm amazed at the statements about the economic stability of the business environment. It really shows, it's shocking to me because of the amount of work that's done by the administration, the EDC, with the Mount Olive Chamber, proactively. We were one of the first towns to open up outdoor dining, made up signs for them, paid for by the Mount Olive Chamber and the council. So I'm really finding it hard to believe the whole comments about how bad we are with the business community. This community is extremely active. During COVID, which has been a great challenge, and all the big companies donated, as a matter of fact, both Givodon and Robate cut their, made special lines of hand sanitizers that gave to all the municipal PDs, the police, and to the hospital, donated their time, donated their efforts, and we delivered them. So I'm just really taken back by that type of statement. You're way off base on that. And that was the biggest problem, and it continues to be. And the focus and the outreach that everybody's doing to the business community, reaching out to the owners, reaching out to their realtors, that is the whole thing, and it's been going on nonstop. So I just, that's, my statement is, we are very active on that, and you need to find out. Pay some, spend some time with the EDC and the Mount Olive Chamber, you'll find out what's going on.
Okay. The next question is more specific, and John, you will start off here. Do you think Mount Olive needs a supermarket? And if so, how would you encourage such an establishment to open?
Well, Mount Olive actually has two supermarkets right now. We have the ShopRite and the Wise. You know, I know there's a lot of chatter about a third one on the Bud Lake side of the town. There is some open storefront space for one. The town has done a lot of promoting and speaking with other supermarket vendors. But ultimately, it's the landlord's decision. We can only do so much. But we do actively promote this. I know, and Greg can probably speak about this more, with the EDC and the Chamber of Commerce and their involvement in helping to bring in, you know, the project of a new supermarket.
Okay, Anton?
Thank you very much. And I don't think that the current town council has done enough. The fact that the Bud Lake section of town does not have a supermarket has virtually turned that section of town into a food desert. And to say that you have two on the Flanders side of town shows a total disregard for those in Bud Lake who are left to either go to Hackettstown or to the Flanders side, with disregard for those who may not have transportation to do so. And it's incumbent upon all of us to work with our landlords, the Chamber of Commerce, and maybe indulge in looking at, you know, redevelopment laws, looking at real estate investment trusts, doing a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis to look at how we can bring a new supermarket into the Bud Lake section of town so that individuals in that section of town do not have to travel an inordinate amount of distance in order to buy, you know, healthy food products. And that will also invigorate that section of Bud Lake. So I don't think the town council has done enough. I think that our team has a different vision and a different energy to move in a different direction.
Sharma, okay, after, you'll have your turn to speak. Greg, we're taking the one-minute responses here. Sharma, you're next.
I'd like to echo the sentiments of my colleague, Dr. Gales. I believe we also need another supermarket in the Bud Lake area, because I'm in the Hackettstown part of Mount Olive. And most of the time, I find myself going towards Hackettstown to the Walmart here to pick up grocery or the shop right here. We had an AMP that's far from where I was living, and that closed down years ago, and nothing was ever done to replace it. I'm not sure exactly what's, why the reason they're left, but I'm sure that we can come up with ways to advocate for businesses to come into our community. We have to be proactive. We can't say, oh, we've done our best. We have to constantly be proactive, looking at ways, how can we advocate on behalf of the landlord? How can we build relationships to establish more business in our community? Because more business means more revenue, more revenue means keeping our taxes lower. So I totally agree with Dr. Gales. Thank you.
And Nicole, it's your turn next.
Thank you. I'm actually going to pivot a little bit from that, but stay on the supermarket track in that I feel that we would be better served using the space to have a bigger food pantry. At this time, our food pantry doesn't carry diapers or baby formula or baby wipes, because there's just not enough space in addition to other things. So I really think that if we're going to expand access to food, then we would do well to serve that part of our community with adding a larger food pantry with more hours, as we are allowed to expand with volunteers to do so. Thank you.
And Gregory, now it's, you have a full minute.
Okay. Concerning the Bud Lake AMP, AMP went out of business. Went out, and everybody in the town, the council, by the way, Anton, does not have that capability or responsibility. We work with the different divisions and departments that do that interface. That is not a responsibility of a council person. We get involved with committees to go help that. And that's where the chambers and the business administration and everybody else comes into. So we have been actively, and I know for a fact that both Lisa Brett, as well as as well as the whole administration team has reached out to folks. Jeff Stadleman, who chairs the EDC, has written letters to everybody, reached out to every single who-type source. The demographics don't work there. There is a smaller one that's looking at it, but it's not there yet. So that mall is actually in pretty darn good shape after what's happened, but it's not big enough for any big food service. That's the problem you guys are all faced. Reality check of how businesses work isn't what it shows on the books. It depends on who owns it, what's their landlord, what's the retail agent looking for, and then what's the rent that they're looking for, so a return on investment. It's not as easy as you guys are making it out today. Everybody's been working nonstop to fill those spots. That's where we are from a township perspective.
Well, Jordan has his turn, and then we'll allow for thirty-second responses. Jordan?
Thank you. So I think the answer is obviously yes. The Bud Lake area of Mount Olive could benefit from a supermarket. What I would say is that the people are our bosses. And if my boss came to me and asked me to do something, and I said, I can't, or I've tried, and can't figure out how to work it, I probably would get a little bit in trouble for that. You know, there has, when there, where there's a will, there's a way. And the people have been asking for it, our bosses have been asking for it. And we need to do whatever we can to ensure that we do what we can to deliver for them. And right now, the fact that people in Bud Lake have to drive to Hackettstown or to Flanders is frankly, you know, unacceptable. You know, our bosses are not happy about that.
Okay. Anton, did you have a, want to make a thirty-second?
Yes, just very quickly, in response to Greg, no one said the work would be easy. However, our team has a plan to establish a task force made up constituents within the community, including the chamber, the EDC, and even including a certified commercial investment member who specializes in these types of situations, working with communities on large commercial properties to look at and assist in redeveloping that area and possibly bringing in a supermarket. It's imperative for the Bud Lake section of our town to feel included and that the town council and administration cares about their needs for a supermarket. Thank you.
Greg, did you want to add a comment? You need to unmute, yeah.
One quick thing on that. That group already exists. It's chaired by Jeff Stadleman from the EDC, with the Mount Olive Chamber, with the township, with the planning boards, and with, and with also the different, with the different renters, as well as reaching out to the owners. That group exists today and has been actively working it.
Nicole, did you?
Yes, I just had a question for Mr. Stewart, actually. I hear a lot, and you said it in your last comment, that that's not the job of the council. And I'm just wondering, you know, why can't it be? Why can't we do more? Why can't we add things to our job description to get it done for the people that have voted for us and are holding us accountable by paying a salary to us? I think that we absolutely need to do more, so I'm wondering why we're always deflecting and saying that's not the job of a council person.
That's not the defined job of a council person, but we are involved in it. That's why I said, like, what John does with his stuff, what I've been doing with the EDC and the chamber, we are actively involved in it. But it's not some, when you get it, you have to go back to the administration, who owns the leadership component of it from a planning and financial approval court. That comes from administration, not from council. We support the administration.
Okay. Sharma, you have thirty seconds, and you need to unmute, yeah.
Yes, I've been hearing quite a lot about, we don't have the demographics, we are not the demographic that's suitable for the store. I would like to ask the question of what do they mean by that, when they say we don't have the demographics for this store? Because even if we don't have the demographics, what are we doing to ensure that we can bring or attract other businesses to fill that empty spot?
I'll answer that again. The demographics are driven by the business. They don't see the right type of financial and headcount with competition. You have a huge target down the street, you have a ShopRite in, just over the border, off of forty-six. You have the owners of another ShopRite that's very big, and then the waste markets, they don't want the competition. So they're not helping. Then you go look for someone else, and they'll look at the competition against it. That's what defines it. It's the headcount with the financials, with what they're going to make back on their investment, and then how much the rent's going to cost. That's the demographics that's been killing us on the old AMP location.
Right. Okay. I think we'll move on, because typically, each individual has only thirty seconds for response, since some candidates addressed questions to Gregory Stewart. I took a little deviation, but let us move on now. And this question, we'll start with you, Anton. Do you support putting sidewalks along Route two oh six and Route forty-six?
I will start by saying that in two thousand and eighteen, the township, in partnership with the State Department of Transportation and the U.S. Department of Transportation, took an extensive study on adding sidewalks throughout the town. And we all know from the research that adding sidewalks in a community adds to the health of the community. It adds to the community feeling of an individual community. But with regards to Route forty-six and two oh six, there have to be some safety considerations taken into account, because they are very highly-traveled roadways. And while I think that there are some areas where you can add sidewalks, we have to couple that with what safety measures will be put in place for pedestrians who might want to walk to one of the local shops and not feel endangered, who may want to cross at one of the lights and not feel endangered. But there is an opportunity, based on the two thousand and eighteen pedestrian and bicycle study that was done by the town with a complete appendix of funding sources that would not burden the taxpayer. And I think it's time for the township to take that report off the shelf and present it to the public, and begin to have an open discussion on adding sidewalks on our roadways.
Sharma, would you like to have a minute?
I would also like, I thought a sentiment of the- I would also like to, I thought a sentiment of Dr. Gill's and also reference that sidewalk plan that he was talking about that was done in twenty eighteen. Sidewalks are very important because they provide benefits that include safety, mobility, and a healthcare community. We are concerned about our kids who have to, who are walking to school that where there are no sidewalks available for them. If they have to walk on the road, there is possibility that they could get into an accident. We have seniors when they want to go out for a walk. There's a possibility that they would not be able to do that, to enjoy that fresh air. So it's infringing on their right to have a safer and healthier life. So I I'm all for sidewalks. However, I believe that we can collaborate with our, with their, with their local residents, with the school board and the township, so that we can build a sidewalk and have accountability among three groups in terms of maintenance. But I am for sidewalk. Thank you.
And Nicole?
I think it's really important to note that we're not discussing putting sidewalks along the entirety of Routes two oh six and forty six. But there are some main areas that are precluded um from from passage. There are some areas that have a curb cut that empty into the middle of a dangerous intersection with no curb cut on the other side. As an occupational therapist, looking at that from a point of accessibility, that's unacceptable in a town with um people who do walk, who do need to get to the CVS, who do need to get to the grocery stores. And you want to talk about increasing business? Why don't we give a crosswalk? Why don't we make a crosswalk across the four lane highway so that people can actually get to the businesses without needing a car? I think that when we look at those specific areas and put sidewalks where they belong, where places are almost walkable, then we definitely increase how many people can engage in our town. Thank you.
Gregory?
Okay, sidewalks, there's been a quite a bit of work that's been done um with the school system and with the with the um police on where they can be put. Part of the issue with, and the biggest issue with them, which Anton did mention, is safety and also whether or not we can even touch it. Route forty six, two oh six are state-owned roads. And then a lot of the other roads like Flanders, Neccon, and the other ones are owned by the County of Morris. We don't have the authority over those. We need to work with those folks, which we have, reach out to them and then get their approval to do it. And on top of it, then you have the issues of who's going to maintain them, who's liable, who's plowing them? There's a lot of issues. It's not that simple. And they are working. Andrew's actively working there.
Jordan?
So so far, I'm going to assume everyone agrees because we've all been saying the same thing that they need sidewalks. Uh, and yes, to Nicole's point, we're not talking about sidewalks throughout the entirety of the highways. I think it's important. I think we all think it's important to have sidewalks for safety for people who are able to walk to stores. Um, they want to go shopping, they want to get food, people who don't necessarily have cars, just people who just want to go for a walk. Uh, I think that while there are a lot of moving parts and obviously everything involves a lot of moving parts when we're talking about government. Uh, again, I go back to the point that if people want them, which they do, then no matter how many moving parts there are, it's our job to make it work. Um, you know, whether it's working with the states or working with the the county, if there's an ability to put a sidewalk in a place that will make things more accessible to the residents of Mount Olive, then it behooves us to do so.
And John?
Sure. So I think the actual question was about putting sidewalks on two oh six and four oh six. So I'm going to answer it that way. Right. So as Greg mentioned, Ma- Mount Olive has no purview over those roads. We can't just lay down concrete, which would obviously cost a lot of money as well. And the fact that we haven't shelved these uh, you know, the plan from two thousand eighteen, it's still being used today. And it's being used with the um uh the the school uh safety grants that we're working on to add more sidewalks closer to the schools. So I am all for sidewalks where it makes sense, especially by the schools and even by parks. Um, but to put them on uh two oh six and forty six, I mean, I personally would not be looking to uh walk on a major highway. But um again, you know, we don't have any say into that. That's a state-owned uh highway that Mount Olive has no control over.
Okay, this next question will start with with Charm. Oh, yes, Antoine. Thirty seconds and then anyone else who would like.
And and this won't even take thirty seconds. I just want to remind the community that in my opening statement to this question, I indicated that the township in two thousand eighteen uh conducted a study in partnership with the State Department of Transportation and the US Department of Transportation. So therefore, I'm encouraged that the state is very much interested in partnering with the township to move forward on sidewalks in some capacity. Again, I will reiterate, let's take that study off the shelf and bring all of the constituents back to the table and share it with the residents of Mount Olive so that we can uh have a productive conversation and move forward.
John and then Nicole.
Sure. And again, the question was related to Route forty six and two oh six, which was not included in that study.
Ni- Nicole, did you want to have thirty seconds?
Yes, please. John, I think it's really nice that you would never walk on two oh six and forty six, but not everyone has the choice to not do that. I personally have had to cross two oh six with both of my children to get my car, which was being serviced at the Mr. Tire. So not everyone has the luxury to not be walking. And I think we owe it to our constituents to make it safe for them, such as adding a crosswalk. And that was included in the study to make it safer for pedestrians and bicyclists, because not everyone can just not walk places.
Okay. All right, we'll now move to another topic that's been mentioned, and that is taxes. The question starts with you, Sharma. How do you plan to keep property taxes from increasing while still attending to the quality of life of our residents?
To keep property taxes low, we believe in looking at alternative ways to generate revenue. The current administration is doing a balancing act of using bonds and notes to keep taxes stable. As you've heard them mention, there was not a tax that we raised in nine years. However, this is not a sustainable practice. In looking at alternative ways, my team and I wouldn't like to make Mount Olive a go-to destination. This will generate footprint, foot traffic, have this, have more businesses, more entertainment, more dining options, which will attract people from other towns, from surrounding communities, which will in turn bring revenue to the township, which will in turn increase our revenue, which will help take the tax burden off our residents. We can do a SWAC analysis to determine our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and then develop a plan of action to ensure that our citizens are not burdened with higher taxes. Thank you.
And Nicole?
Thank you. Um, I echo what um Alicia has said, Brahm, I'm sorry. Um, in that, you know, there's definitely ways that we can increase revenue, but I think we also have to look at our spending. For example, the town council um members each have a salary of ten thousand dollars. And a few years ago, just gave themselves a raise. Maybe we don't need a salary. Maybe there are places that um in our town that can become more self-sufficient and we can shift those funds elsewhere to provide more services. I think that there are ways that we can improve things without increasing taxes. Uh, we just have to work a little bit harder at finding them.
Gregory?
We have not raised municipal taxes in nine years, as John had pointed out. And the reason is very conservative spending, very conservative lending. We keep a budget so that if in the event, and this really paid off during COVID when resources were shut down, not one thing was cut back from the township to delivery for our, for our services. We didn't lose any employees. We didn't lose any police. We didn't lose any to fire people because we we are very conservative on the management of the budget. And the ones where it gets in uh where it has been increased is because courtesy of the school that keeps increasing their money. That is not part of something council has any control over. So that's a reality check, folks. Sorry.
And Jordan?
Um, rather than echo the the sentiment of of those I'm running with Alicia and Nicole, what I will say is I I do believe it's a little disingenuous to pivot and say that while the Republicans are aren't going to raise taxes or haven't raised taxes, so therefore the Democrats are, um which I believe is is what the intent is of that type of uh argument. Um, there are ways to do more without raising taxes uh as already been highlighted. So I'll just leave it with just because taxes haven't been raised in nine years by the by the Republicans, doesn't automatically mean that if they were not reelected, that automatically magically taxes will be raised because Democrats are now in office.
Johanna, it's your turn next.
Sure. So yeah, um, you know, working with the the mayor and the finance department, one of the tools they have in their toolbox is the fund balance. So the fund balance actually is more of a of a safety net during uh uncertain times or even the good times. Um, you know, that's essentially used to keep taxes stable. It avoids the peaks and valleys, um especially during those uncertain times. So I think as long as we continue to have a healthy uh uh fund balance, which we've had under uh Mayor Greenbaum, we'll continue to keep taxes stable uh even in the future during uncertain times.
And Anton?
Thank you. I I'm just going to say that um uh to Gregory Stewart, two point eight million dollars in American Rescue uh plan money also helped uh Mount Olive uh, you know, stay afloat during COVID. And regarding the uh the the budget, the mayor has the ability to bond for capital projects. The school board doesn't. The only way that it can raise funding for the phenomenal school district that we have is to go to the taxpayers for it. And I think that everyone in this community can say that they're proud of the school district that we have. And in order to maintain a a stable uh tax levy, which is currently point six oh six, I believe that we have to really focus on the alternative measures, one of which is reinvigorating our business economy so that it is a major contributor uh in terms of of tax revenue. Uh, we might want to take a look at how we can expand those um nonprofit organizations that uh participate in the pilots, which are payments in lieu of taxes. So there are other alternatives to uh addressing the tax issue. And the last point I'll make is, of course, the tax levy can remain stable because as you add more new developments, more homes into the community to spread that tax burden throughout those homes, of course, you can maintain the six, the point six oh six. But how many pieces of parcel of land can you develop on uh until we run out of land to develop? So this is an unsustainable practice over time, and we're kicking the proverbial can of uh debt down the road for the next generation to pay. Thank you.
Gregory, you had your hand up. Did you want a thirty second rejoinder?
Yeah, first off, one. Yeah, first off, to Jordan, we never said, never, neither John nor I accused you of raising taxes. All we're questioning is the sanity of your argument because it's very, it it doesn't hold water on what's being done, how it's being managed, how the budget is managed, how the how Sherry and her team manage the debt, which is very minimal, one of the lowest, and how we get a triple, a double A plus rating, which is one of the best, which is the best in in this state because of conservative managing of the money, not overspending. I'm also confused, Anton, on the fact I didn't under, I never heard that the school board couldn't bond things. I think they can. I just don't think they have.
John, did you want to make a re- rejoinder?
No, I'm okay now. Thanks.
Okay. All right, we'll move to, oh, Antoine and then Sharma.
Just just a quick reply. Uh, again, I will state, when the school board wants to invest in our facilities, wants to, uh for example, uh when we wanted full day kindergarten, we initially went out to referendum. Because of school funding uh policies in New Jersey, whenever we want to uh construct something, uh bring innovation to our school district, we have to go to the taxpayer for that. We cannot go out and and bond on our own. We have to go to referendum and have it approved by uh the public. And the first time we went out for referendum for full day kindergarten, the referendum failed. So full day kindergarten failed. So we cannot bond.
I just want to add that even though um we have not raised the tax levy, I also want to add that our tax haven't decreased either, despite the fact that our tax base have improved. So the residents have not seen the benefit of having a tax base improve. Also, our debt, which is twenty five million as of last year, um net debt is twenty five million, and I've noticed over the years, we have been paying almost six hundred thousand dollars in interest on these debts. Year after year, we've seen this. Debt has been paid off, debt has been increased. It's a, it's a constant reshuffling of the debt. That's how they maintain their tax levy. At least that's in my opinion, based on what I saw in the financial.
Right. You have thirty seconds, because you haven't spoken. John?
Yep. So two things. So the debt um has actually decreased in the last ten years. Uh, about ten years ago, we were about twenty seven million, we're about twenty five million now. And you have to remember, a portion of that is being paid for by some of the sports organizations. So you know, the turfing of the soccer field, the football field, the baseball fields, those organizations are paying for most of that. The town is bonding for it, but the sports organizations are paying for it. And then in regards to reducing taxes, I believe me, I would love to reduce taxes and not to minimize this, but to reduce someone's property tax by a hundred dollars, you have to reduce the uh the budget by a million dollars or increase revenues by a million dollars. Thank you.
Okay. I think we'll move on now to our our next question. And uh this starts with you, Nicole. And that has to do with um ordinances. What, if any, new proposals for local ordinances and or resolutions do you think are needed and why?
I think uh I live down in the Clover Hill development, and I think one ordinance that would really improve the safety um for walkers and for drivers in our town would be to make a one um every other alternate side, one-sided parking ordinance. Um, there's a lot of places on our streets where people double park. So on one side, the car is here, and just exactly across from it is another car. And you can't see going past, and there have been several accidents in my development because of that. Um, so in order to improve safety for the kids who do walk to school and can't always traverse on the sidewalk and have to walk in the street, and for the other cars, it would be important to have on those um side streets uh alternate side parking ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, and and Gregory?
What's the uh the question to what Nicole just said?
Yes. Do you want me to read the question again?
No, 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 no. That's okay. So the ordinance component of it, especially for anything issued with parking and so forth, when anything like that comes into the township, the police are asked to go and do a study for us. And then it comes back on the pluses and minuses of doing something. So if the community like yours really wants it, they should, they they reach out to the uh out to the administration. They put the piece in with the police to go and study the thing, and then they come back with a proposal. Same things we used to have. We had speed bumps in a variety of areas and took them out because they weren't effective.
Jordan, it's your turn.
Um, to, thank you. Um, it, bringing up speed bumps, actually, that would be something that I would look into. Uh, in canvassing through Clover Hill, which is actually where I live, one of the biggest issues that people have spoke to me about and that I've seen personally is the speeding. In fact, if you were to go to the Clover Hill Facebook forum, talking about various speeders and which cars they saw fly past Clover Hill is a daily occurrence. So that is really one of the big ones for me. I know that's super local as it's in terms of my actual area of Mount Olive, but taking a look at where we can help um, you know, increase the safety of our town. And uh that would be one of the places that I would look at.
And John?
Yeah, I mean, this is a really good question, actually. Uh, so I would, I would almost say, you know, sort of along Jordan's uh view, I do like the idea of an So I would, I would almost say, you know, sort of along Jordan's view, I do like the idea of an ordinance to control speeding a bit. You know, I live in a school district, you know, it's quarter of a mile down the road from me. We have speed bumps in our neighborhood, at least on the main roads leading up to the school. And while the speed bumps tend to work, they're not quite a solution. And you would probably hear the same, you know, response from the police department and the mayor, they're not fan of speed bumps. You know, there's, there's other tools that they like to use, whether it's the speedometers, the solar speedometers, or, or even making the roads narrow, narrower at least, to try and control the speed a little bit better that way. So.
Okay. And Anton, it's now your turn.
Thank you. And I will echo the sentiments of my teammate, Ms. Spaldo, but for a different reason regarding an ordinance for also the side of the street parking. And many of the developments that exist around town, the roads are narrow, the streets are narrow. And so if you have cars parked on both sides of a narrow road, it creates a traffic hazard. And I, as I've walked around town, talking to many residents, they have gone to town hall and they have voiced their concerns about parking on both sides of the street. And many of them were told that there's really nothing that can be done. And we're here to say, let's begin to have that conversation to see what can be done. Thank you.
And thank you. And Sharma.
Thank you. So one of the things I would like to see done, or my team and I would like to see happen in my Olive is to have a town beautification ordinance. And this would ensure that landowners, property owners would maintain their properties in a presentable way that would not cause an eyesore for us. There are many properties, especially on the 46 corridor or even on the 206 area where property owners are not maintaining their properties. The parking lots are added terrible and deteriorating, or they have old vehicles that's parked on the roadways that's just sitting there. So these things are eyesore. So we would like to have a beautification ordinance if one exists currently, but that is something that we would like to see to help make Mount Olive more beautiful and attractive so that we can have tourism and businesses coming in. Thank you.
Okay. And this will be, I'm mindful of the time. This will be our last question. Each of the six candidates has had an opportunity for every position in the sequence. And this time we'll start with you, Gregory. And, and the question is, do you think there is discrimination in Mount Olive? And if so, what would you do about it?
There's discrimination all across the world. So from my own personal perspective, from the business community and so forth that I face, I don't see it. It's an active community, a very diverse community, great community to work with. Same thing with the folks on, on the council that I've worked with, the folks in the, in the township, the police, the fire department. I have not seen the issues that Washington DC is pitching in our community. We are actually a lot of communities are jealous of us, to be frank with you from down, I'm a member in a Morris County chamber. A lot of folks just talk about what we do up in our town. Very proud of our town. I don't see the big issue of that. It does happen, but then it needs to be addressed the right ways.
Jordan, it's your turn now.
Discrimination is everywhere. Mount Olive is no different. Whether I personally have felt any or haven't, it exists. And I think really when it comes to that, when it comes to discrimination, when it comes to inequality, the first word that comes to my mind is education. And it's important that we educate the youth of Mount Olive about all facets of American life, about all the different colors and flavors of this country, that we immerse them in the different cultures and ethnicities and backgrounds that exist to show that while we all may come from different places, we are one human race and we're all one Mount Olive. So for me, yes, it obviously does exist. And I believe education and celebration of our differences would be one way of creating equanimity.
Okay. And John, you're next.
Sure. I mean, I, I think you'll probably hear similar answers from all of us. I mean, I think discrimination does, you know, exist everywhere. Unfortunately, I'm sure it exists in Mount Olive and may, while I may not have personally felt it myself, I do agree with Jordan again, you know, it, it starts at home, you know, and it's educating your children to be, you know, inclusive amongst everybody. And, you know, that's how I raised my family. That's how I was raised from my parents. And I can only hope that, you know, that Mount Olive continues to, you know, act in the appropriate manner.
Okay. And Anton.
Thank you. I do believe it exists here. In addition to the concept of microaggressions and implicit bias, when you talk to members of color of our community, they will tell you that those things do exist. And they often felt marginalized and neglected. We have to, as a governing body, be intentional and purposeful and proactive in meeting people where they are and engaging them, educating them and bringing them into the fold. I challenge the current leadership to take a look at any activity that has taken place in Mount Olive over the past year and highlight for me where you have highlighted the multicultural and diverse population that exists here in our town, whether it's via music, cultural arts, dance, you name it. Where has it been highlighted? And because it has not been highlighted, those members of our society, of our community don't feel engaged and connected to local governance and the everyday ins and outs of Mount Olive. Our team looks to correct that, to meet people where they are, to engage with them and to incorporate the multicultural, the ethnic, the LGBTQ plus community, not just with a ceremony and a flag, but really engage people and include them in the fabric of everyday life in Mount Olive.
Thank you. Thank you. And now to you, Sharma.
I echo the same sentiments of everyone here. There is discrimination everywhere. And like Dr. Gail said, we need to be mindful when we are having programs, when we're doing policies, when we are planning to be, to be inclusive, includes everyone in the community, you know? One of the things as I've talked about with residents, as I've been canvassing over the past four months or so, is that certain people, people in certain neighborhoods feel neglected or discriminated against because they live in that part of the neighborhood. So I believe, like Jordan said, education is important because diversity is the fabric of life that holds our society together, you know? And as we become more diverse in our community, it's important also that our local government reflects that diversity because diversity brings a wider perspective in solving complex challenges, which only increase community engagement. Thank you.
And Nicole.
Thank you. I had a lot of time to think since I'm the last one in the line. So yeah, a four-pronged approach to this. Okay. I think that the first thing we need to do as a community is a five-pronged. Acknowledge that discrimination absolutely does exist in our town. We've seen it in action. Second, we need to hold listening sessions with people from all across the community. We need to sit down with people from all different demographics and hear their nuanced experiences and take them to heart. Then we need to build community. We need to build back. We need to hold gatherings that bring everyone together. And during those community building activities, we need to educate people. We need to educate people on race, gender identity, sexual orientation, socioeconomics, religion, all of the things that people are currently discriminated against, age. We need to do those things. And lastly, the fifth thing that we need to do is we need to model not discriminating. We need to model that as citizens, as active members of our town council, as community engagement activists, we need to model being accepting and encouraging of everyone in the community to engage and be involved in their town because they live here. We are happy that everyone lives here and we want to see everyone involved in the town. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And you know, there, I picked questions that were fairly discreet. There were some somewhat repetitive and in the interest of time, we'll have to forego that. And each candidate has been first, second, third, fourth, fifth and sixth. So that is an effort at a level playing field. So now it's time for our conclusions and again concluding comments. And you can, each candidate has two minutes. And again, we'll use alphabetical order. So Jordan, you're first.
All right. Well, thank you again. This has been, this is my first debate ever. It's a very spirited debate. So I, I thank again the League of Women Voters as well as our Republican counterparts for engaging in this this evening. So just in closing, in my professional life, I'm a manager at SHI International. And I find the phrase, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, an antithesis to progress. One of the things I love is when we bring someone new into the department. Because like any other business, we have various processes and procedures that we just do. That's just how we do our business. But when we bring in a new set of eyes on the old way of doing things, it gives us an opportunity to improve in places that we didn't even realize can be approved upon. And really, it's, it's these new voices bring new ideas and new solutions to old problems. And elections are a golden opportunity for reflection. I love Mount Olive, but that doesn't mean that there aren't opportunities for improvement. And it's up to you, the voters, to think about what's most important to you and what direction you'd like to see the town going. And then from there to choose who you believe is the best to lead us there. So, so with that, I thank you all. And lastly, this November, I'd ask you to vote for new voices with real vision and vote for Gales, Spaldo, Sharma and Bernstein. Thank you and have a good night.
Okay. And now to you, John.
Sure. So, so this was great. Thank you again to the, to the League of Women for hosting this event. Thank you, Antoine, Alicia, Jordan and Nicole for participating as well. For the past 10 years under the leadership of Mayor Greenbaum, I've been a part of something special. We have turned Turkey Brook Park into one of the premier parks in New Jersey. We have filled vacant warehouse and office space with additions such as Amazon, LabQ and Fratelli Beretta. We've increased recreation sponsored events dramatically with events like movie nights, the carnival, Oktoberfest and ferry and pirate festivals. We have enhanced the safety of our residents by continuing to support, support specific needs for the Mount Olive Police Department, Fire Department and Rescue Squads. We have improved garbage collection with the introduction of the One Armed Bandit, which also provided a significant saving to the taxpayer while preserving the health of the sanitation crew. We are helping to improve the environment with the building of one of the largest solar farms in Morris County, unique treatment of Bud Lake and the implementation of township electric vehicles. We're beginning the redevelopment of Flanders Valley Brook Park for passive recreation and the much needed revitalization of the Bud Lake Beach area. We have continued to increase revenue by offering health, sanitation, fire marshal courts and animal control services under contract with neighboring municipalities. And finally, this has all been accomplished while we have not raised municipal taxes in nine straight years. Mayor Greenbaum, Town Council, Administration, Municipal Staff and the many volunteers and residents have truly made Mount Olive a wonderful township. While there's, while there are still things that we need to work on, especially during these uncertain times, I promise I will always do what's best for the residents of Mount Olive to make it a destination to live, work and play. I'd like to ask the residents of Mount Olive for continued support and vote for myself, Greg Stewart, John Mania, Daniel Amiando, November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. And now you, Anton.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, Louise, you did a great job for this tremendous opportunity to speak directly to our residents. To John and Greg Stewart, thank you very much, and to my running mates. And to you, the voters, for spending some time with us tonight. In my conversation with many of you through the summer, it's very clear that you want a council team that is accessible, visible, who promote a governance structure that works for everyone. And tonight you heard a lot of why it won't work. But with a vote for Gales, Spaldo, Sharma and Bernstein, we can begin to realize a vision for Mount Olive that reflects the rich diversity in gender, ethnic and religious adversity that exists in our town. Casting that vote is your opportunity to change the status quo of it won't work or let's wait and see what other towns do. We can be leaders in Northwest New Jersey and throughout the state. I've also been asked, why change? To that, I say that one of the most dangerous statements that we can say to ourselves is we're doing it this way because we've always done it this way. This kind of thinking sacrifices creativity, innovation, visionary and forward thinking for the sake of ease and comfort. As you've heard Jordan mention, I've also heard, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. To that, I'll add, but continually improve upon it. So now more than ever is the time to improve upon our local leadership with new voices, with real vision, ready to do the hard work. So on November 2nd, we humbly ask that you vote for Gales, Spaldo, Sharma and Bernstein for Town Council. Thank you.
And Sharma.
Sorry. Once again, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting us, to my teammates and to our Republican colleagues. I especially would like to thank you, the viewers, and those who submit questions. I hope that we are able to answer your questions and give clarity on some of the issues that concern you. Election is about choices. And this year, the choice could not be clearer. It is not a choice between political parties or personalities. It is a choice for what's best for Mount Olive. But before you make that choice, ask yourself these questions. What type of town council representative would you like to see in Mount Olive? A team that's reactive or proactive? A team that's complacent or power thinking? A team that's invisible or one that will be visible about the people that they serve? My fellow residents, when you vote for Gales, Spaldo, Sharma and Bernstein, you are voting for candidates who are proactive, power thinking, will show up, will be visible in our community and strategic in planning for the future of Mount Olive. A vote for us is a vote for economic sustainability, fiscal responsibility, transparency, equity and diversity. But most importantly, community involvement. Your vote for us will ensure our town, the town that you love and grew up in, becomes the go-to destination for businesses, the arts, entertainment, dining, shopping, outdoor activities and so much more. In closing, I strongly encourage everyone regardless of your party affiliation to come out and vote. On November 2nd, in person or by mail, vote for Gales, Spaldo, Sharma and Bernstein. We would be honored to serve you. Thank you.
And Nicole.
Thank you. Thank you all for taking the time to be here tonight or to watch the replay tomorrow. Thank you to Mr. Ferrante and Mr. Stewart for being present tonight and of course, the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. As my fellow candidates said, what is the most important quality of a candidate to you? Tonight, we heard a lot of great ideas and a lot of reasons why we just can't do the things that we're suggesting. As a voter myself, the most important attribute to consider are activity and approachability, especially at a town council level. I want to be able to bring issues to my council representative and know that they will be presented it objectively and without bias and without being told that it just isn't possible right off the bat. and without being told that it just isn't possible right off the bat. I hope that it is evident from tonight that that is the councilwoman I want to be for you. Over the past nine years of living in Mount Olive, I have championed many issues for my neighbors, from mintex to senior trash pickup to accessible parking when they couldn't go to the meetings themselves. I have shown up at these meetings in their stead and I have helped to ensure that their voices are heard, even if the topic didn't directly affect me. Because your issues are my issues. We are all in this together. As your employee, because that's what council members are, I will actively listen and then act on your requests. Activity and engagement, getting things done in an efficient and timely manner, that's what is important to the residents and that is what we can do for you. So please, on November 2nd, vote column one. Thank you.
And finally, to you, Gregory.
Well, I thank everybody that participated tonight, watched it. And again, a big shout out to our League of Women Voters for hosting this thing tonight. One thing, the message that, that really has to be driven home is the fact that I'm as proud as I can be of working, collaborating with the council team. John's echoed the same thing, same as our, our two running mates. We're all proud of what we do with the administration and departments, and we continue to strive to make Mount Olive the best place to live, work, and raise a family. As I close out my second term on council, 21, as we were talking about, 2021's pandemic issues created a whole different level of challenges. But I'm also proud the way everybody reacted to it. Example is, we continue to provide over $1 million of paving streets throughout Mount Olive. We finished the Phase 1 of the Old Flanders Sewer Project. We continue to focus and on that, on Bud Lake and make significant progress in headway on the water quality as well as the new thing that's coming out with the floating islands. Sewer House received another phase of upgrades, and we continue to work on the abandoned buildings. Case in point, the Bluebird was finally condemned and demolished after a lot of legal issues on it. Finally, I'm very proud to be a member and continue to be a member of the team serving Mount Olive, working with our police departments, fire departments, rescue squads, township departments from administration, and all the volunteers that fill the boards and committees. We all work together. And, and there is an open communication. Somebody has something, somebody's more than willing to listen and bring it back and then figure out how best to do it, if we can do it. And the partnerships with the Chamber of Commerce, the EDCs, all show that the components of, as John pointed out, the buildings that have come. Freddie Ferretti is a case in point, tripling in size here in our town. So as we finish up, I ask for our residents' support in this year's elections for Mr. Ferrante, Mania, Amoranty, and myself. Thank you. We still love, we love our community and we want to continue to help it.
Okay. Well, this concludes our program tonight. And as I want to say, thank you to all present, a special acknowledgement to Kelly Shay for doing the important work of timing so we ensure a level playing field. And I think that the real, yes, yes, that's a job I wouldn't want to do. That, and I think the real winners are the voters in Mount Olive because this has been a very substantive conversation. And I don't live anywhere near you, but I can see that you have your own things to deal with and try to represent a range of the questions. So
We'd love to have you come up and move up here.
It sounds pretty good about that Turkey Park. Maybe I'll come up there to take a look in the beautiful falls. Thank you. So, good night. And to everyone, remember to vote on or by November 2nd. Thanks you again to you.
Good night. Good night, everyone. Thank you, everyone.
Good night. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.